I can give you a mic right now when I'm done.
Your mic.
My mic. Can you hear me? Okay, good. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, in the public and people on Zoom. Notice that this meeting was given to the township clerk and posted on township bulletin board and website calendar and sent to the West Orange Chronicle and the Star Ledger. This meeting has been properly noted in the public in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. No numerates will start after 10:30 PM. I ask everybody to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your majesty's hands. When we have been divided into individual political parties, just as well.
Thank you. Please be seated. The next planning board special meeting will be held on August 25th, 2025 at 6:30 PM in person in Town Hall. The next planning board regular meeting will be held September 3rd, 2025 at 7:30 PM via Zoom. Roll call, please, Yamalet.
Mr. Alpert?
Here.
Ms. Cardoza? Ms. Caffler?
Here.
Mr. Klein? Mr. Wox? Councilwoman Scarpah?
Present.
Mayor McCartney?
Present.
Mr. Warino?
Present.
Chairman Bagoff?
Here. Thank you. So we have the first resolution, PB 25-06 Turtle Bag Zoo, the Givens exhibit resolution. And we find that this is consistent with the master plan. Do I have a motion to accept?
So please, Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chairman. Vice Chairman moves and I second the motion. Yamalet on the motion.
Ms. Alpert?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpah?
Yes.
Mayor McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Warino?
Yes.
Chairman Bagoff?
Yes. Resolution carries. I have the minutes of April 7th, 2025, West Orange Planning Board Draft Minutes. Does anybody have any questions, additions, or deletions? Seeing none, I make a motion, we adopt the minutes of 5/7/25, 2025, West Orange Planning Board Draft Minutes. So I have a second.
I'll second.
Mr. Alpert seconds. On the motion, Yamalet.
Mr. Alpert?
Yes.
Ms. Caffler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpah?
Yes.
Mayor McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Warino?
Yes.
Chairman Bagoff?
Yes. Minutes are adopted. We have the June 4th, 2025, West Orange Planning Board Draft Minutes. Do I have any deletions, additions, or corrections? Seeing none, I make a motion that we adopt the June 4th, 2025, West Orange Planning Board Draft Minutes. So I have a second.
Second, Mr.
Vice Chairman Guarino seconds. On the motion, Yamalet.
Mr. Alpert?
Yes.
Ms. Caffler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpah?
Yes.
Mayor McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Warino?
Yes.
Chairman Bagoff?
Yes, the minutes are adopted. Ms. McGovern, would you swear in the township professionals, please?
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear? Swear affirm to tell the truth, hold you to nothing but the truth.
I do.
Thank you.
We have an ordinance review that was sent down to us from the council, 2935-20. I'm sorry? Okay. Okay, we're going to move the review of the ordinance to the end of the meeting. PB 24-01, West Essex Highlands Incorporated, Block 179, Lot 32, Zone IH1, Warner Road. The applicant is proposing to develop a 496-unit inclusionary multifamily residential development on 120-acre property in the northwest corner of the township. Mr. Plucker, for the applicant.
Hi, good evening. Brian Plucker from Hutchamannowitz and Plucker here on behalf of the applicant, West Essex Highlands, Inc.
Mr. Efron?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Bruce Efron for the objector, we care. I heard just a moment ago that you indicated there's an ordinance review, you would move to the end of the meeting?
Yes.
If it's a separate matter, which I assume it is, Mr. Gall is on the Parkway in a deluge and he asked me to tell you that climate change is delaying him. He had an estimated time of arrival of 6:53, but he says it keeps getting longer. That was a few minutes ago, so if it had another matter, you might want to turn.
Thank you for that information. Well, I'm going to let Mr. Efron, I just want to share this with you and the public. We've had seven meetings. This will be the eighth meeting of the objectors. The reason for having information on both sides is that the planning board has the understanding of information in relation to the zone plan and what our obligation is to weigh the application. The information that we have reviewed, I believe, and I'm going to ask the planning board if you, I will poll the members. Do you, from the seven meetings that we have, have almost enough information to make a decision based on the IH1 zone plan?
Mr. Chairman, Matt.
I'm talking to the board now. We're going to.
Well, I.
I'm going to play this, Mr. Efron.
The board needs to know what other witnesses are coming.
Well, we're going to get there. We're going to get there. I didn't say we're making the decision tonight.
Well, I know you didn't, but nevertheless, the board doesn't know who's coming.
Well, the board will know what's coming very shortly when I ask. Okay?
Okay.
So we want to try and give everybody time to say their piece, which we apparently don't have all the people that you want to get to us. So I want you.
Not today.
Not today, but we're going to get there. Okay, so we have had seven meetings. Tonight will be the eighth. And we have heard many objectors and applicants and the information in the zone plan is there for us to banter back and forth. We have our experts and Mr. McNeil will share some information with us in a report that he has produced at the request of the board, looking at a number of things. Okay? So what I'm going to suggest is, Mr. Efron, tonight and your next meeting, which will be on the 25th, that's going to be the last meeting. Unless there is something that is unable to happen at that night, we ask the objectors to finish up with whoever we haven't heard from. Okay, use the entire meeting because as we have looked at, most of the meetings have not been used for the entire evening, for whatever reason. However, we also know that the applicant has the right to have a reasonable application going forward. And we're trying to be reasonable to both sides. We want to hear from the people. We want to hear from the people in the, in the community. We want to hear from the objectors. And we also want to deliver a fair application to the applicant. So I will say, next meeting, please, let us know who's coming, what they're talking about, so we can all understand. If we have questions, we can get reasonable questions based on who's coming.
I, I can't tell you now who's scheduled right now, just so you know.
If you, if you would, if you would email that to the board attorney, that would be fantastic.
That's already been done. The difference is, Professor Hesse can't be here tonight and the board doesn't wish to do Zoom, so he will be on the 25th as well. And Michelle Byers, whose testimony is brief, but follows Professor Hesse's, will have to be on the 25th as well.
Okay.
We may be able to make it, depending, of course, on how many questions there are from the board. Mr. Plucker typically does not do a lot of cross, so I don't think that takes a lot of time, but the board may have a lot of questions. It's traffic.
And they may, and we'll, we'll expand as we need to, but we're going to try and get as much as we can done this meeting and the next meeting.
We certainly endeavor to do that.
And then we will try and have a public comment after that. And then we will go for, both sides can sum up and then the board will have time to review.
I imagine we'll be using literally the entire night, no matter what, at the next meeting.
I'm sorry?
The objectors' case will take the whole night, I'm sure.
We're going to be here.
Because there's a lot there. I would just note for the record that.
Bless you.
Professor Hesse was not available because of a family medical problem, which I indicated generally in my letters to council, in the board council.
For this evening.
How, right. He was willing, I'm not suggesting you have to do it.
I got it. You don't have to put that on the record. We understand. It's okay.
He was willing to do it by Zoom.
Right.
So we could speed along the process, but the board's preferences, and I understand that entirely, the board's preference is to do with live witnesses.
Yes, because.
He was available in that way.
That's the way it's been published, right? And we'd have to go with the way it's been published.
No, I just want to make sure it was clear. He was available, but I understand.
And I understand that, but it was also published to be in person, so we want to follow the rules. But I appreciate that and we're going to, we're going to work towards it together. Thank you. Okay, so now we're going to move back to the ordinance review. Hey, 2935-25 Revised with Amendments Ordinance to Outdoor Cafe 4911-2488-7631. There's V1, the final clean version, and I'd like to hear from our planner, Mr. Hazel, about master plan consistency review with this ordinance. Sir.
It's chair and members of the board. You have my memo dated August 4th, 25, which I reviewed the proposed ordinance that's before the board on outdoor cafes. I find that this is. Sure. In my opinion, this ordinance as presented is consistent with the goals and objectives of the master plan. There is one area, however, that I do identify where some of the language, in my opinion, is a bit subjective. This is in. This is in provision C under the proposed changes, where it states that some form of formal space delineation, which is aesthetically pleasing, such as a removable fence, shall be required in a parking lot or on sidewalks. I question the use of the word aesthetically, the phrase aesthetically pleasing. I believe that that is subjective. It would create problems in both the implementation of this ordinance and enforcement. And I recommend that it be deleted and/or replaced with something that's a little more objective.
Okay, is part of the ordinance that if it rains, the business owners will take these seating and bring it into their establishments?
I do recall that there is, yes, there is, I'm trying to remember where this has been. Yes, the insulation of continuous-use tents, canopies, umbrellas, et cetera. Is this area you're referring to?
Well, the question I have is, let's say it's raining and this is normally stored out of season in a storage center. And you bring it into the establishment, that could create a hazard for people walking around in the establishment. So there are places where if you just put it up against the building and bring your fence closer, that may be more reasonable, as opposed to trying to take wet furniture into the.
It's E. Street furniture must be, must be moved into the serving establishment when the outdoor cafe is not open for business.
Right, and I think that may be a hazard for the people.
Yes, I mean, looking at that, to me, the, the issue is making sure that whatever is used for the outdoor area is not going to create any form of hazard or so for people entering and traveling around the facility. Someone may actually have a separate shed or storage room somewhere on the premises that they can do that with. But I think maybe if it's put in the couch in terms of maintaining adequate mobility that does not compromise safety, something.
That sounds, that sounds fair. I would recommend that.
Adequate mobility.
Adequate mobility and safety. I would also take out, there was one thing where it says upholstered furniture should not be used. And I don't know if it's because somebody didn't like upholstered furniture, they were scared by it when they were young.
It doesn't say prefer it or it says shall not be used.
Right, I think maybe it should be left to the purveyor of what furniture they should feel would be best for their clientele. Okay, do any members of the board, Mayor McCartney, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Chairman. I appreciate Mr. Hazel's report and said I appreciate Mr. Hazel's report on the definition of aesthetically pleasing. I think we need a definition for amplified music. You know, for amplified music. You know, it could be gentle music. It, I understand the context of what they're trying to say, but you know, we're trying to. I think there should be a definition.
She's right. In the definition section, we should have a definition of what they would consider music.
How many decibels or so? I agree.
I think, I think you're right. I think the way to do it, now the township does have a decibel ordinance.
Right.
So maybe if we refer to that, because that's already been accepted, and use that as quote unquote, music noise, anything that is, that falls on the decibel level.
Yep.
Which is the section that says amplified music, because I see the use of sound amplification device on the sidewalk now. Oh, and, oh, okay. Okay. All right.
So that's a good segue for my next concern would be the hours of operation, because hand in hand with our noise ordinance.
Could you cite the letter?
I'm, I'm looking at the report. On the report, it would be J.
J.
J, okay.
Right. And I think that that should coincide with our town ordinance.
So J should coincide with town ordinance. Now, the other thing is, it said a it said any permit issued by the director of planning. So is the permit to, for sidewalk or the, what is the permit for? An additional permit for using on the sidewalk? And if so, is there another fee associated with this permit? I'm sorry. Okay. Okay, so, so the, the. Okay, so that, I'm trying. So the thing I asked was, the thing that I asked was, in J, it asks for a permit issued by the director of planning. And the two questions were, is this a permit to use the sidewalk? And if so, is there a fee for the perm, that permit? Yeah, okay, so Director of Planning tells us there's a fee and is the fee established that could be associated with this ordinance? Or it is? It's, it's, so it should relate from J to the ordinance, wherever the ordinance is. Okay, so we should have J point to the ordinance and we'll ask Director of Planning, Gary Adams, to let us know, so we'll put that into the recommendation. Thank you.
So Chairman, then that question about the permit, though, I guess it would be directed to the Director of Planning, that that permit, there is an annual fee that you're going to continue your outdoor cafe license, and that's why we need the annual permit.
Yes, so the permit should be renewed every year. Okay, that should also be in the ordinance. And we should have the dates of use for this permit, so it should start on this date and end at that date. And we'll leave that to the council to work out the dates with you, Director of Planning. Mayor, do you have any other?
Nope, that was it. Thank you, Chairman.
Ms. Caffler, do you have any questions or comments?
I do not. Yeah, my, my only comment was related to sound, which Mayor McCartney already brought up.
Thank you. Vice Chairman Guarino, do you have any questions?
No, the mayor's comments have already covered my questions.
Thank you. Mr. Alpert, do you have any questions?
A couple of things. On the upholstered issue, I think some of this ordinance looks like it was copied and pasted from, not that, that happens all the time. That's not a criticism, but that it originated in some COVID legislation that allowed for outdoor dining, when it ordinarily wasn't allowed during COVID. And I wonder if upholstery is sort of leftover. Maybe there was a concern that the cushion, the jerk, something.
Fair enough.
Um, you know, I, I agree, you know, I'd much rather see, you know, I think there's technical reasons maybe why it's hard to do this with decibel levels, but I'd rather see a way found to, you know, enforce decibel limits rather than a blanket restriction. You know, it feels like we're trying to solve noise problems at bars and nightclubs with, you know, an ordinance that's going to impact the restaurants that we're trying to attract, so. My other issue, though, is under item N, lowercase Roman numeral two, there's a whole bit there about using parking lots, and that might also be COVID leftover. But it says that more than 75% of the parking lot can't be encumbered for service and sale unless the parking lot contains less than eight parking spaces. So first, I'm just, I want to make sure that there's some consideration that, you know, businesses have required numbers of parking spaces and that if they're taking away from that, that could be a problem. And then the way it says that there's fewer, it seems to be saying that if they have more than eight spots, then they can only use 75%. If they have eight, if they have fewer than eight, it doesn't say they could use every spot and take away all their parking. So I think maybe that's also COVID leftover that can be cleaned up or something.
Okay, so we'll send NII back to the council and ask them to come up with better verbiage. Ms. Gary Adams.
The code wasn't changed during COVID at all. It was not revised. This is the same code that we've been using for the last 20 years.
Okay, it's 20 years?
Correct. It's just being revised now. So there was a different COVID permit by the state that allowed the sidewalk cafe that you did not have to go by zoning, but we never changed our code.
So, so we didn't like upholstery for 20 years. Wow.
Correct. That's correct.
I'm changed.
Interesting.
Yeah.
The times have been changed.
Story. Somebody probably had bedbugs.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks, Jim.
Is it all?
But I think that has to do with mold also. I think that can makes a good point about.
Mr. McNeil, do you have any questions?
No questions on this one, thankfully.
Oh, Councilperson Scarpah, do you have any questions or comments?
No, no, I don't.
Thank you. And Mr. Hazel?
No, I was just commenting on the fact that the code had not changed. I think the upholstery thing could be also the fact that it's outside and that it's susceptible to inclement weather and things of that sort, so.
Also.
Yeah, mold.
Okay, you can talk. We make better upholstery now.
I was just going to say that.
Yeah.
They've, they've designed the outdoor furniture that's upholstered to have the water just flow through and dry, which was a lot different that many years ago.
Hey, do any members of the public have any comment about this ordinance? Please come up, raise your hand, come up, be identified.
Seth Westletter, West Orange. I guess a question came up about amplification. I think it said no amplification outside, amplification devices, which needs to be defined of what those devices are and what amplification means. I think that's important. We mentioned going by our town decibel ordinance, but that's kind of what got us in the pickle in the first place with this sidewalk cafe in decibel. But we have no way of enforcing decibel levels. I don't believe we have the equipment. I don't believe we have the manpower to enforce it, and it seems to be a question of, is it too loud, not too loud in decibels? So I don't think relying on another ordinance that has failed this town and got us here with this going back and forth on a sidewalk cafe regarding certain types of amplification in certain types of establishment in a certain area. I also think we need to be careful of what we are talking about, as this affects the whole down, the whole town of West Orange, not just downtown. So when we talk about a look and feel of downtown, as the West Orange Alliance tries to get a certain feel and look, and we're leaving this, let's just say loosey-goosey here in terms of definition of what it means and the look and feel, we can be doing ourselves a very big disservice in the long run, especially to new businesses that we're trying to attract in other areas of the town. So I think we need to look at this closer. I think there needs to be more coordination, and I think bouncing this back and forth is a complete waste of time. Thank you.
Thank you. So let's condense that to say to the council, you have to come up with a way to measure decibels. If we're going to put that in the ordinance, and we have to have a definition of amplification. Makes sense? Mayor McCartney?
So if there was a complaint, then it gets to the police department and the police do come out and investigate. And I do know that there was one shopkeeper that actually has a decibel meter so that he is staying within the limits. So I think that's the only thing we have to go on is the decibel level.
Does the town own the decibel meter?
Decibel.
Okay, so then that will be the arbiter of.
Called down.
But we do need a, it was a good, good thought to have a definition of amplification in our definition section.
Thank you.
Do any other members of the public have any questions or comments about this ordinance? Please come up and raise your, raise your hand, come up. And seeing none, we're going to close that portion of the meeting. Hey, do any members of the board have any other comments? So. Okay, yet again. I will make a motion that we send this back to the town council, 2935-25 Revised with Amendments Ordinance to Outdoor Cafe 4911-2488-7631. There's V1, the final clean ordinance, with our recommendations to revisit this and answer the questions that have been posed by the public and the board to better tweak the ordinance to make it more useful to the township. Do I have a second?
Second, Mr.
Vice Chairman seconds. On the motion, Yamalet?
Mr. Alpert?
Yes.
Ms. Caffler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpah?
Yes.
Mayor McCartney? Mr. Warino?
No, yes.
Chairman Bagoff?
Yes. The resolution is adopted, and Ms. McGovern, would you send this back to the council for their evaluation and deliberation?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Efron?
Thank you.
But I'm just going to repeat this. Is he here?
He is here.
Okay, good. Application PB 24-01, West Essex Highlands Incorporated, Block 179, Lot 32, Zone IH1, Warner Road. The applicant is proposing to develop a 496-unit inclusionary family residential development on a vacant 120-acre property in the northwest corner of the township. For the objector, Mr. Efron.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our witness, Jeff Gall of Princeton Hydro, is here. I also wanted to advise the board, although it's not my witness, I was advised that a representative of the West, West Orange Environmental Commission was going to be present tonight to present a resolution. I don't know as a courtesy whether the board would like to hear from them first. They're not my witness, but I was advised they were here. I believe they're here tonight.
Yes, so the resolution's been presented to the planning board. We're going to send the question to the township attorney. There are some other legal issues that have to be addressed, so we're not going to hear that this evening.
Fair enough, and if Ms. McGovern could send me a copy of the resolution, I've never seen it.
I don't, I don't have a copy of it. I got to see it and I handed it back. It's going to go to the township attorney.
Great, I'll get a copy. Thank you.
At some point, yeah, I guess.
So Mr. Gall is here and I would, I have some profferies to make, but I think that should be done after his testimony.
Go right ahead, sir.
Mr. Pauls?
Yes, there we go.
Should you have a color one or a color printout?
Can people hear me? Louder? Okay. All right.
Was this, that was emailed to me tonight?
What if you're colorblind?
You know what, did we give one of these to Gemma Letts so it can be, because it's going to be marked as an exhibit?
Mr. Plucker?
All you all here. Brian, do you have one of these?
Yes.
Okay.
Give one to Mr. McNeil's.
Okay, open our PGO.
Share with him. We're sharing. Yes, absolutely.
You have one left. I'll take an original, otherwise I have it. And the next number on our exhibits are. Oh, where is it? 21.
I don't need it, but there was, I guess there was some of these figures that were forwarded to them, so I don't know if that. I mean, I, I mean, I don't. I don't think I need it.
Thank you. Mr. Gall has already been sworn. I assume he continues to remain under oath.
You understand you're still under oath?
I do.
Okay.
I'm going to allow Mr. Gall to just present his report. I may interject with questions at some point. I assume he's prepared to do that. I'm going to allow, uh, Mr. Gaul to just present his report. I may interject with questions at some point. Um, I assume he's prepared to do that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, the last time I was here to testify, uh, oh, and, uh, thank you for waiting for me. I appreciate it.
Yeah, Jeff, try, try to be close to the mic if you.
The last time I was here. One second. I'm going to ask the member of the public, if you can hear, just raise your hand. Okay, so he's going to talk louder, and if we, if you can hear, just raise your hand and I will identify to him. I, I, I know, I know. Uh, go to the town, do me a favor, go to the town council meeting, and please express to them that you can hear during the planning board meetings. Thank you. Go right ahead, sir. Thank you. Uh, the last time I was here, I testified on a report, uh, in, from July uh, that I prepared reviewing the, uh, geotechnical slope stability analysis in the area of building D. Um, the, the question was asked, I, I, I apologize, a member of the board said, how come you didn't run the numbers yourself? I think my answer was if it, uh, I just, you know, I didn't have time, but also, um, I thought the applicant might do that as well. Um, but what I did is, um, I just ended up running the numbers myself. So what we did is we took two, two of the cross-sections um, using the applicant's data or the, the applicant's engineer's data um, and use their borings. And if you recall at the last meeting that I was here, um, I had stated that they had used the best data that they had found. In other words, the most competent rock um, in subsurface conditions in all their cross-sections. Uh, there was a, um, uh, some of their borings, they got, uh, for example, very low RQDs, if you can remember that, the rock quality designation, uh, the lower, and it's from zero to a hundred percent, and the lower the quality, uh, in other words, the lower the percentage, um, the wor- the worse the rock quality was in, and they were using the higher, uh, rock quality data that they had and assuming a very high, what's called, uh, a geological strength index, which is also reflective of, uh, you can, uh, deduce that from the, um, RQDs you get in the field. So for cross-section C and D, and cross-section C is the, uh, section that is, uh, the most northeast um, of the property. It's actually the section that goes through and then it, it goes down to Howell Ave. It's where the closest houses are on, excuse me, on Howell Drive are located. Um, and we also looked at, um, section D, which is just next to that, just, uh, a little bit more south of that, um, in the same vicinity of that slope. So we ended up using their information, um, to, uh, develop our slope stability analysis. So we obtained topographic data from the town that's available. It's the township-wide topographic data because I did not have access to the applicant's topographic information in CAD. Uh, we reviewed it. It was essentially the same um, as we would expect it to be. Um, and then input that, the geometry of the slopes and then took the boring data that they provided in those locations and entered them into the program to make sure, um, that we were, um, running a similar model or a similar analysis. Uh, we simply just accepted on our first run based on our geometry, just, this is sort of like a test to make sure that we're kind of talking the same language in terms of analysis. Uh, we put their same exact, um, parameters in. And so, for example, um, on figure one that you might look at, we've got a factor of safety of one point five eight nine in the worst case scenario, and they had a factor of safety of one point five nine nine. For all intents and purposes, that's the same. That was for section C, and then for section D, similar analysis. Um, we came up with a factor of safety of one point nine three six, and they came, they had developed a factor of safety of one point nine three eight. That's assuming, again, we're using their data, and we're just using that to corroborate our, the, the layout of our model to make sure it's the same.
I'm going to object just for the clear record. It looks like the notation, the caption at the bottom of the uh, ex- uh, exhibit, it looks like it's reversed. It says that Langin was on top and Princeton Hydro is on the bottom. I think the testimony just reflected the opposite. So just so the record is clear, can we get some clarification?
Let's ask the witness then to explain. Mr. Parker suggesting that on page two of your report, correct, Mr. Parker?
Yes, sorry, two, three, two and three.
Uh, that it may be, Mr. Parker thinks from what you said that the Langin version versus your version, Princeton Hydro version may be transposed.
Could you read back what I said? It is possible? I didn't know if the.
We would not object as a report of presence, so if it could be read back.
He doesn't know where it is. Okay, I'll, let me just either, either. Tell you what, I'll tell you what, for clarity, look at your diagram and read the diagram into the record, so it's clear.
We can also.
Do top and bottom on the top.
Chairman, we do have it available on the screen. It's, it's available.
Let him read, say, this is the top, and it's yours or theirs, and this is the bottom, it's yours or theirs. That's how simple it will be. And we'll mark yours or theirs. Okay? Go right ahead. Thank you. The, on figure one, the Langin model is on the top, and the Princeton Hydro model is on the bottom, and that is correct. They both reflect that. If I had, if I had misspoke and reversed that, I'd apologize, but that's, that's, uh, Thank you. Regardless, it makes no difference because we basically replicated their model and came up with the same number because we used their parameters that they assumed based on their best rock information. And the same thing on page three. Uh, we also came up with similar factors of safety uh, regarding the, uh, model ours, uh, theirs was on top and ours was on the bottom. And so we came up with a factor of safety of one point nine three eight, and they came up with a factor of safety of one point three six. So that, thank you for, uh, that correction, um, if I reverse that.
Mr. Gaul, I have a quick, a couple of quick questions for you.
Yes.
You said the numbers were basically the same. You're referring on page two of your report to the fact that the Langin number was one point five eight nine and yours is one point five nine nine. Is that correct?
The Langin number is five, one point five eight nine, and our number was five, one point five nine nine.
Right. When you said it didn't make that much difference, is that because those numbers were close? Is that?
Yeah, they're very close. Yeah.
Same applies to page three.
Yes, I mean, that's, we're down to the hundredth, or the hundredth of a, of a, a, a number, so it's not, in, in this analysis, it's not a big deal.
Okay, thank you.
Basically, thank you.
Please continue.
So, um, we did that, and the same thing on figure two. Um, our, uh, Langin's analysis on the top, this is basically screenshotted from their report, and ours is a screenshot from our analysis, um, at the bottom. So, one of the things we can, we want, then wanted to do, and we did a sensitivity analysis using the GSI and modifying that um, and came up with, um, looking at uh, what happens when you change the GSI, the, the geological strength index and reflective of the poor and, and the very poor joint conditions. And so, um, we looked at a ten-foot, uh, thick layer of bedrock with weaker parameters that we changed because that was more reflective of the borings, um, that were, uh, prepared for this, that were, uh, obtained um, by Langin on this project. So there was ten feet of rock coring, um, as well, and we use that, uh, that quality of that low quality, if you recall, I think it was C had a rock quality data of, of, uh, zero um, and twenty-three, zero percent and twenty-three percent of a hundred. And so you need to take that GSI number and lower it to an appropriate number. Um, and so that's what we did. So we took a number on the section C and, um, ended up changing the, um, uh, the GSI to twenty, and our lowest numbers, well, there is a, there's an isolated number there that frankly, you can disregard. It's point seven, seven, four on figure three on the bottom right. That's actually less than one, meaning that's, the, the slope is actively failing, but it's a very small area, um, down slope and that, that, uh, um, even if it is failing, it's just, that's what it is in that location. It's very isolated. However, when you go up to, uh, the other, uh, cross-sections and looking for the, the lowest factor of safety, the number on cross-section C drops from a one point drops from a one point, um, five eight nine and one point five nine nine down to a one point four eight. Uh, so that dropped as well, um, but more significantly, if you go to figure four, um, that number also dropped significantly, um, down to one point six five, um, at the lowest um, uh, value, uh, from there, one point nine and change. Um.
That was on cross-section D?
Uh, that was on, yeah, yeah, cross-section D, figure four. So, what does that mean? Well, if you recall, anything above, if you do your analysis, um, and I'm going to be just very transparent here, when you do an analysis.
Speak louder, please.
Yeah, okay, a number of one point zero on a stability analysis, if it's above that, according to the calculation, that means there's more resistance than forces, resistance to failure than forces pushing it down. It's basically a ratio of the forces pushing down to the forces resisting. So if you get a one point one or a one point four, that actually shows that there's more resistance uh, from failure than put the, the force trying to fail the slope. Now, you'd say to yourself, that's a good thing. Um, however, because if it's less than one, technically the slope's in a, in a, um, it's in a, in an active mode of failure. However, engineering guidance and ge- and geotechnical engineering, um, is not a, an exact engineering science because if you think about it, the, the ground conditions, the soil conditions and rock conditions are very, they're extremely va- variable from boring to boring and from location to location. So, um, the various authorities on these types, these subjects, geotechnical engineering, um, in this case, um, comes up with what we call factors of safety that you should meet. So even though you're at a one-point force, let's say, in, uh, in section D on figure four, is that enough? Um, and so in accordance with the United States Army Corps of Engineers, their, their manual November nineteen ninety-four, it's their EM, which is engineering manual, one, 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 zero dash one dash two nine oh eight, engineering and design rock foundations. Um, there, they, I put a quote out for, here on page five in the middle, the calculated factor of safety is primarily dependent upon geometry of the potential failure path selected for analysis and the sheer strength representative of the potential failure surface. Other factors such as groundwater conditions and potential for erosion and seismic loading, and, and I highlight, I bolded this, and possible blast-induced loosening of the rock mass must also be addressed. The other thing they meant they recommend, um, and it's on the second, on, at the bottom of page five, is for major rock slopes where the consequence of failure is severe, the minimum required calculated factor of safety is two point zero. So double what would be considered a just balanced, um, at one point zero, where, uh, resisting factors, uh, resisting, um, loads are equal to, uh, failure loads. But they would rec- uh, recommend two point zero. Other slopes that are not so consequential could be at a factor of safety as low as one point three. However, based on my analysis and our, and our understanding of the site and the proximity, especially of the homes that are located literally on the, on the toe of slope of, on Howell Drive of those homes, I would say that if there's a potential for, uh, damage to life and property, that the higher factor of safety, a severe consequence should be followed. And in this case, none of the factors of safety, even the, or even the ones developed by Langin, let's use their information, do not even meet the, the standard of care of the two point O slope stability. Now, with that said, the slope may exist in that condition naturally. It may just have a low factor of safety. But as you recall, the Army, the, is, the, the Army Corps of Engineers recommendations in their EM manual are concerned about erosion, seismic loading, and blast-induced loosening of the rock, and that's their concern. And so if the factors of safety naturally are already low, and again, you're all aware of, and of other rock slides in the area, um, not pertaining to this specific site, but there have been rock slides that have been induced both by construction activity, but sometimes just by, uh, you know, uh, weather-induced conditions, you know, uh, excessive rainfalls and things like that. So this is already, um, a slope that has, um, a potential for not, for not being stable, and now they're proposing the building, which is going to be right next to it, and doing excavations and potentially blasting to reach grades. So I wanted to just bring this up. I brought this to your attention, um, and so that you guys can have this, uh, to review, and I can take any other questions. Thank you.
Uh, I have a quick question. I just want to clarify. In your understanding, Mr. Gaul, is the Arm, to what extent is the Army Corps of Engineers standards and manual representing the standard of care in the engineering profession?
Uh, all engineers, geotechnical engineers follow that standard of care. It's, it's, uh, it's something that we reference often. So it's, it's, it's something to go by. Um, a lot of other organizations also then refer to the Army Corps of Engineers, like the American Society of Civil Engineers, um, and other professional organizations of the engineering community.
Thank you.
Hey, Mayor McCartney, do you have any questions?
Trying to formulate the question, uh, with all of this information. Um, so this sounds like the worst-case scenario that's being described here, though it says the factor of safety is two point O. So we are under that, but from geotechnical engineers, is there a way to shore it up? Like what would have to get done to?
Program going in and stabilizing it, putting in rock bolts and, um,
Sorry, sorry.
Yeah, you know what? It was fun. It was like, flip it. Thank you.
Um, you would have to, um, you would have to go in and do an extensive, um, an extensive program of, uh, you know, rock bolting or something to stabilize those slopes to ensure that they're not going to fail. If you ever drive along a highway where they've done some rock cuts, you'll see like these bolts and these plates against the, the side. That's what they usually, that's what that means, is there's actually a long rod that sticks into the, the rock that's been drilled in to try to stabilize those areas. So that would mean they would have to extend their limited disturbance um, and do an extensive stability, uh, uh, program on this, on this slope.
Thank you, Chairman.
I don't have any questions at this time, yes.
Yes, I have a question. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, thank you for your presentation today, sir. Just from your professional experience, is, are there any processes or construction or any pre-things that can be done to offset any potential failures that you're saying are present at this property?
Well, as I, as I stated, to do some engineering reinforcement of all those slopes on that eastern side of the property, so you'd probably have to clear off the trees going in with a, or clear areas of that slope to go in with machinery that would then drill bolts in or, and do some type of stability that would, would reinforce those slopes.
So, so.
Get it above a two point zero.
So there are things other than natural barriers or stuff that things can be done. Progression construction and adjustments and reinforcements can be done before construction starts that would prevent any of your highlighted failures.
That is, well, y- yes, but I don't see any type of, uh, methodology that's being proposed to the application, nor is there limit of disturbance extending beyond that. So my, in my, uh, understanding of the situation, they are planning no work in that area, which would also then increase their, uh, potentially their, their, uh, requiring to go back for their DEP permits again, and um, to me, it would materially change this application.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, so when you're talking about, uh, rock bolts and plates, were you just saying that work would have to be done outside of the allowed area of disturbance for that to happen?
That is correct.
Okay, um, your GSI that you used when you did the numbers was twenty, uh, what was Langin's?
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five, and would, is your twenty, is it a conservative number? Is it the worst possible number from the data you saw? Is it sort of?
There's tables that we use to figure the, that, that correlate the GSI numbers and the, and the RQDs. And so you look, and if it's zero to twenty-five, for example, it's this, it should be this, and so you go down the line. So we tried to, uh, make it equal to, or at least, uh, match what is recommended.
Okay, um, is there a definition of a major rock slope? As used in, where it says for major rock slopes where the consequence of failure is severe, obviously the consequence of failure would be severe, but it, does this qualify as a major rock slope? Is there a definition of what is and what isn't a major?
I would say if it's a, it's a slope that's potentially can cause damage and be significant, have significant impacts, that's a pretty major rock slope.
Okay, so it's not, there's no definition that requires.
There's not a regulatory, there's not a regulatory, you know, definition. It's just their recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, yeah, thank you again for your testimony.
Yeah, thank you again for your testimony, uh just a quick question. Have you identified any non-compliance based on the township zoning code?
Your township zoning code does not cover geotechnical stability, except um I would imagine uh they're required to provide a uh a design of a development that is safe for the public.
Okay, thank you.
No, not at this time.
Thank you, there is, have you any questions? Thank you, ready, maybe the public, have any?
Yeah.
Maybe the public have any questions? Please raise your hand, be identified, come on up, sir.
Uh Orin Knights, KNIGHTS.
Thank you.
And this question is disposed to this gentleman right here.
Yes, sir.
Um as far as the the stability of the area that we're talking about. I know in um in April of the fifth of twenty twenty-four, we had a magnitude of four point eight uh earthquake. I happened to be home that day and it actually shook the house. Then just recently, August fifth, yeah, the two point seven, I believe it was, it also shook the house. So when you talk about the boring, that's going to have to take place, the the blasting, I believe it is, you're gonna have to blast that area?
Well, I I don't know the exact method of of excavation they're going to use, but the rock is deep enough that they'll need to uh th- they'll spend a lot of time using a hydraulic hammer on an excavator versus um uh you know, using blasting, usually blasting is the most efficient.
So you you mentioned about the slope, because in my recollection, building number four that they're proposing to build is ac- actually at the edge of a slope. And um in addition to that, that's going to be a building along with a swimming pool on top, I believe it is, which in my estimation is going to cause even more of an impact in that area because of the weight from the water. So what I'm asking is, um in lieu of what you have just said, and with the earthquakes that we have had just recently, and a few years ago on Northfield Avenue, we had that uh rock slide that ended up losing the building. In your estimation, do you believe if we were to have another major earthquake with those particular buildings on top, on top of that area, can it compromise to the point where it caused a rock slide? And number two, this is my last question to the to the C um to the board. If there is damage to homes from the blasting, who is responsible for house, for the um, for the residents' houses? Is that going to be something that's going to be put in an escrow? Who is going to be responsible if our foundations are being damaged by the blasting? That's my question.
Thank you.
At the second one. Yes, I I, the answer is, I don't know. I mean, it's it's, you know, it depends on, you know, where the, you know, where the earth, earthquake's epicenter is, what the the situation is, could it, could it be exacerbated by the building, maybe?
Nancy Meyerowitz, Howell Drive. Picking up on that question, would one of the options be to move building D, so what, would one of the options be to move building D so it wasn't sitting on top of that steep slope?
That's why I testified to that last time, if they moved it back, I don't know, fifty, a hundred feet or something like that, maybe it would be uh this slope would be a little bit better protected, the further you can get it back, the better.
And the second question is, my understanding is this project was grandfathered into the current steep slope requirements. So if if the builder had to comply with the current steep slopes, would this project be approved? Or meet, meet the current steep slope requirements?
I don't know, I didn't look at the steep slope ordinance for this particular analysis. Sorry, you'd have to ask the township engineer, or township engineer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Valerie McCarthy, um are you aware of where um fifteen Howell uh Drive is located in relative to the proposed development?
I thought it was, I'm not sure if it's fifteen or seventeen, I'm not sure if it's fifteen or seventeen, it's like right at the, right at the corner there.
Correct, I live at fifteen, which is right at the corner. And I just wanted to understand, based on your analysis um of the building closest to my property, if the excavation process and the blasting would be standard in terms of its impact to my property relative to standard developments and buildings, would it be a greater impact in terms of a potential damage to foundation, or would it be standard for any development that would go up?
I I'm not, I'm not sure what you're asking me, in ter- I'm sorry.
So in in a normal development that's not near a steep slope.
Oh.
Compared to where my property is located, do you think that the impact of the the excavation process would be greater or equal based on the location of the development in relative to my my property?
There's more opportunity for, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Um there's more opportunity for, um I mean, obviously, because there's a slope there, there's more opportunity for a failure to occur as opposed to being either further back or in an area that is relatively flat, is my answer.
In terms of that failure, what what does that look like? Is it damage to the foundation, is it causing structural?
Of your?
Correct.
I don't know, but it would uh, you know, if there was a slope failure, it means there's rock that would slide down and and um either toward, you know, toward your house, depending on where the failure was. If it was in that northeastern corner, toward the fifteen, it would be, it would go toward your house. How far would it go? Um I don't know, but yeah, I mean, I'm sure if 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 fragments of rock got to your house, it would cause some damage.
Okay. And in terms of, just a follow-up to the prior person's uh question, in terms of to the planning board, whose responsibility would that be if there is damage to the homes? If you guys approve this development?
I can't answer that.
Thank you.
Rachel Klein, Howell Drive, um based on your um if, so theoretically, they're talking about possible uh slope failure, which you've indicated would be possibly rocks falling and damage to the homes. Would we, would there be any warning? Or would it, was this something that we could, like, oh, if a couple of rocks are falling, something, there's something's going on here, like, in your expertise, is there a way to get ourselves, you know, to safety, do we have to be worried about getting ourselves to safety if this fails, if this goes through? You know, looking towards the future, to this building, sitting on the slope right above our homes, with our children, where they play, live?
Um it's a, that's a, it's not easy to to predict in terms of, for example, whether it would be a slow, sudden as the material, if the material on the surface, like the soil material were to fail, um it would likely uh, what's called a slump, and it would kind of flow down the hill. Um so you'd probably get, uh you'd probably get a few minutes of of warning. Uh if it's a rock failure, usually rock failures are pretty sudden.
So my ten-year-old, eight-year-old, five-year-old, they'd have plenty of time to get to safety if this failed?
I.
Possibly not.
I I can't, I don't, I can't answer that question, that's not for me to answer.
Thank you.
Thank you, any of the public have any questions, please come up, be identified, you have three minutes.
Seth Lysler, seventeen Howell Drive. Obviously, concerned as my neighbors are, I lived in my house for three years. Fifteen and seventeen are really close, two hundred feet almost from the corner of the building, a building D. When you get heavy rain, water already runs towards our property. I'm not an engineer, but I have a few questions if things should fail. If part of the slope were to give way, even a small section, could the soil, rock, or water reach our homes?
It, it's possible.
Has any study been done to show exactly how far the slope material could travel if failure could happen in the section towards Howell Drive?
I don't think that any analysis was completed for that, I did not do that analysis.
Could an analysis be done?
Uh to, rock falls are usually, you know, from a cliff is usually a little easier to, there's a, there's a um guidance documents for that, um but the but the slides are a little bit, a little trickier to model, it's, that's not something that can readily be um calculated.
So I I know the last three years that I've lived there, in a very short period of time, we've had these one-hundred-year storms a couple of times. I don't know what we call them now, but we saw fast-moving water down towards Howell Drive. If we have in more storms like this, and the extra water weight on the slope, could it more likely make it to fail?
Yes, I mean, water, whenever you um, whenever you introduce water um or higher, you know, for example, it elevates groundwater, or you get a sudden rush of water into it, it basically both adds weight to the slope, which increases the the failure forces that are trying to push the slope down, but it also acts as sort of a lubricant once it gets in between the interstitial spaces to to create a slide.
And and what about these additional shaking of the earth, could that exacerbate a rock slide, a a slope failure too?
Of course, yes.
Did your model account for any changes over time? Like soil getting weaker or wetter after more and more years of storms?
No, we use the existing conditions that were obtained by the by Langen.
Okay, but could a a study be done to show those models and what could happen to a slope in ten years from now, five years from now?
Uh no, the only thing you could do is is as as we did, is a sensitivity analysis, you know, lowering parameters, looking at changing the different parameters in the model, seeing if, you know, a certain condition, you know, rock becomes less um uh cohesive, or or soil becomes less cohesive with itself, and if it um, you know, it could, and then you'd lower those parameters and remodel it. But that that's, that's basically what you do, time, the time value of that, I don't know, that's that's not something I'm I'm an expert at.
So you mentioned a lot of safety factors in your testimony. Did that number of count for the fact that gravity, any, any account for the actual gravity of sliding material downhill towards our neighborhood?
Well, it it just looks at the resisting versus the 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 pushing load, the failure load. It just looks at the two to see if there's balance or not.
Right, so th- these models were done without construction. Construction adds weight, adds vibration to the top of the slope, especially being right on that line, how does that affect the chance of it moving downhill faster or quicker?
Uh well, no, that's, that's not necessarily true, there's a um uh I think I'm going blind, I need a, so if, I'm just trying to read, so I read it properly. Uh let's see, so. So when you're looking at the diagram, uh where is it, it's D. Um so it's, it's basically a um, it's a factor of like how much construction has impacted a site. Uh Langa did assume that there would be, you know, somewhat construction impacted, as well as 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 we also assume the same. So if you use a a number one in the model, it it assumes that there's a disturbance going on. My big disagreement was with the GSI, which is something that it, actually, the two together actually sort of magnify each other. So if you're using a high GSI, it artificially lowers the potential factors of sa- or increases the factors of safety. Um but when you combine them, there's actually a combined effect that they can do that. So uh they did look at, they did look at potential construction impacts, but they didn't, they didn't look at the actual quality of the rock.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
One more, please.
Uh I can return, can I return, I'll let somebody else, okay, I'll be quick. So from what you've seen in the boring logs, is there anything that would guarantee the families on Howell Drive's home safety if construction would changes the slope?
I I can't guarantee you anything on that.
Okay, obviously, we talked about extra protective protections, reinforcements, but doing construction on the slope and taking away trees, doesn't that, what effect would that have on on water coming down the slope?
Well, if you take.
Create another issue?
Sorry.
Yeah.
If you take away, if you tweak away vegetation and roots and things like that, and it's more exposed to rainfall, yeah, you would get more erosion and potential instability.
Final question, if you were living where I live in fifteen or seventeen with your property directly below the slope, would you be comfortable with this plan moving forward?
Uh that's, I mean, probably not, I mean, depending, if I would be more comfortable if if uh there were some type of activity that made it stable or more stable, but I don't see that in the application materials.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Say your name, you have three minutes.
Um hello, my name is Sage Frolost, um I would just like to remind you that I noticed you used uh the phrase worst-case scenario before, um and I would like to say that we've seen worst-case scenario happening more and more frequently across the state, and I've personally, yes.
Overcoming, not tonight, and answer the question about what you testified.
Okay, um can I say that um I think that um a better question to ask than who is responsible for if something happens and there's damage to any property, is how will those people be held responsible? And there needs to be a plan developed, like for how?
Question.
Okay. Okay, um I, is there any way to hold people accountable for how a plan may be developed um in the worst-case scenario, or at the event of a worst-case scenario?
Uh that's up to the planning board and and whoever's reviewing the project.
Thank you very much.
Barker, if I may, thank you. Um with regard to the last member from the community who spoke, she had a concern to raise, which you indicated is properly in fi- in public comment, not during questions. I just wanted to make it clear to the citizen who is here that there's a time later on when she can come back and make those statements. Thank you.
Hi, uh Daniella De Palma, one L. Uh I have a question, I know in the plan there is a proposed water tower. As a geological technical engineer, from your standpoint, do you think that the wetlands or the ground of the project is sound enough for a water tower to be supported?
I'm sorry, I, I think with respect.
I think there was a comment that a water tower might be needed for some functions, it's not in the plans. Uh it's not our position that there is a water tower in the plans at present, so perhaps that would help the community member.
So if there was going to be one, if the if the project needed, would it be supported by the ground?
Uh you need to do a a, you know, very detailed geotechnical investigation in the location of that water tower before you could make a conclusion, but it's, you know, if it was, it, you know, I'm not even going to make a a guess as to um, you know, because I don't know what the size is, I don't know how many, you know, how many gallons and all this stuff, but it would add, it would definitely add load to if to support uh a development of this size, a pretty sizable load.
And in a worst-case scenario, a scenario in case there was a landslide, what would the impact be?
Well, the.
On the water?
Oh, on the, well, I don't know, it depends on where the water tower's placed, I can't, I mean, if if the slide happened underneath it, yeah, it would undermine the support of the wa- the water tower, which could make that fail. If it was above it, that means the water could hit, you know, if it was, I don't know where this water tower is being placed, but if it was down slope or something, and there's a slope failure, it could get hit um and and damaged the the water tower um as well, so.
Thank you.
Hey, may I have a public question, come right up, they may, you have three minutes.
Hi, Valerie McCarthy again, um I just had a question, follow up on following up on um Seth's question, um does the proposed project comply with the recognized um engineering standards for construction and is on a steep slope or nearest steep slope, in your opinion?
Um I think that's more a matter of, uh well, there's, you know, there, I mean, I think the township does have a steep slope ordinance. I mean, usually there are setbacks and things like that, but I'm not, you know, familiar, too familiar specifically with this township's steep slope ordinance. I've seen others where you need to have like fifty feet away, I know Jersey City has a steep slope ordinance um that requires, uh I think you have to be at least fifty feet away from the edge, or thirty, I think it's thirty or fifty feet from the edge of a cliff, and there's a a number of different uh requirements for that, both from a a ba- base, both from an aesthetic and a safety standpoint.
But from a engineering standpoint, is there a standard um construction um standard for building on a steep slope or nearest steep slope?
Well, as I said, the, you know, it it depends on how much investigation and how much design you're willing to do. I mean, with enough money, you can do a lot of things. Um um but you would also then have to expand the footprint of the development, go in and do these uh stabilization measures, and you know, they're not inexpensive, they're probably in the hundreds of at least a hundreds of thousands of dollars on a slope this big, could be over a, you know, a million, I mean, it could be a lot, it's very expensive.
And in terms of mitigation of safety, I think part of your comment was that that was not included in the proposed development. As an engineer, would that give you? As an engineer, would that give you pause as it relates to particularly the residents at one Howell Drive? That those mitigation, um, standards were not part of the development or the plan?
Yeah, if there was an expect, again, I'm not the design engineer on the site, I'm not the geotech, but that we would want to look at this carefully and closely. If it was below factors of safety, we would recommend that they go further to increase that factor of safety on that slope.
Based on your analysis, is it at safety or below?
Well, based on my letter and our analysis, it's below the required fa- or the, the industry standard factor of safety that's recommended by the United States Army Corps of Engineers.
Okay, thank you.
Seth Weissletter, 17 Howell, just one question. What additional investigation measures would you recommend before, to the planning board to determine that this slope poses no undue risk to the neighboring homes?
Um, I would do a, uh, if, if it were me, I would do more, more, uh, soil borings and, and cores. I would go deeper with the cores as well. They went 10 feet. Um, and I said, like I said at the last meeting, uh, some of the cross sections, um, didn't extend necessarily far enough. They should have probably, we expanded our sections to show, um, what that potential impact was. Uh, I would look at more of a, doing a, a geological analysis. They talk about how in their, in their report that they went out in the field, they saw a small outcrop and it looked like it was, you know, the, the, um, um, the dip of the, of the, of the fracturing was in toward the slope, but that's really a very isolated, small area. Who knows what it's like for the rest of the way. You'd wanted, you know, you can do that with, uh, aerial stereos and other, and GIS, and you can actually look at the, the, uh, the geology of the area. Um, and then I would have gone further to also, and I didn't do it in mind because it's, like I said, it's, we, we did this one, uh, exercise, but I didn't want to, uh, do too much, um, uh, because of our consideration to our client. Um, but also looking at the, um, for example, the wastewater utility line that's down there that has now, you know, that was excavated at one time into the soil, the native soils and, and presumably, yes, the, the probably had proper bedding and, and things like that, but because it was in an open space area, probably the backfilling wasn't exactly like to structural standards, for example, like preparing for a road or something like that. I don't think they foresaw, you know, something, a development that would be going on and adding load up to the top of the slope or, or potentially causing slope failures.
Hi, it's Barbara White, 51 Howell. I have a question for you regarding the extent of the, uh, investigation you did. I think it was primarily around building D. Is that correct?
Well, I didn't conduct the investigation.
I'm sorry, the work that you did.
Yeah, I, I focused, it was the, the report that I was provided was a focused, uh, investigation around building D.
Right, so in your professional opinion, while you may not have looked at A, B, and C, would there be similar considerations that would need to be looked to regarding the other structures as well?
Uh, I would say that the building D is probably the most exposed to a, you know, a, a potential slope issue. It's at the top. It's where the drops off again. Um, in looking at the, the other plans for the other buildings, they're not quite as close to any other types of really steep slopes in those areas. And going by recollection from looking at the plans because I was focused on D, but I would say D would be, uh, sort of the, the biggest concern I would have.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, Renard Fiskus on, uh, 78 Davie on the other side. Um, the question I have for you is that the bore holes were 10 feet. In your opinion, is that deep enough to do the proper analysis?
Uh, just to be clear, the, the borings were, were much, they were deeper than, than 10 feet. That was just the rock core portion of it. So they went down through the, um, through the soil that sits on top, uh, uh, weathered rock and, you know, materials that settled there over time. Um, and then they, once they hit, uh, competent rock or not competent rock, rock able to collect, um, core data through these diamond, um, teeth, uh, core barrels. Uh, they were, that, that's when they took the, the samples. Um, you know, there, there was, I mean, especially on the one boring where they, they got a very poor RQD at the bottom. I think, I forgot which boring it was, but it was on, I think it was on section C, cross section C. Um, they, they still had only gotten a, an RQD of 23 and I would have, you know, requested of my client to go another five feet to see if it gets better.
So in your opinion, is that the, the holes were drilled deep enough or you think they should have gone?
I would have, I would have pushed to go deeper just to get into more competent rock.
In the area that the work has been projected, uh, with the, that area being affected as far as water runoff. Uh, as far as building number four, it's at the edge of the slope. One, two questions. Are there going to be possibly a retaining wall that you mentioned about reinforcing that area? Building number four is right on the edge, actually.
Which is building number four?
That's D.
Oh, D, okay.
In, in your professional, uh, opinion, should there be a, a retaining wall in that area right there? Number two, right in that area, downstream, there's other streets down there. There's a lot of flooding on a normal basis. So, um, is there, um, I'm not sure if it's for you or for the city, but is there a stormwater runoff system that was studied to handle the amount of water that's going to be coming down because we're cutting down trees, parking lots and stuff. So a lot of water is going to be coming down. So would that affect downstream, like the streets down there, like Rose, Rose, Rosemont and other streets?
Uh, stormwater analysis was not part of my, my analysis. It's, that, that, I know another gentleman from my firm uh, had testified in the stormwater system previously. So that, that is the person you would need to ask.
Rachel Klein, Howell Drive. I'm trying to remember if this was asked. I know we're talking a lot about possible damage to surrounding homes. But are, would you be worried at all about building D itself and its structural soundness if it were put there based on what could possibly happen? With what it's, um, you know, uh, being anchored by? You know, if it was, if it was built where they're proposing to build it, like, would, would you live in it?
Oh, well, that was asked this last time.
That's what I'm trying to remember, yeah.
Yeah, no, I would not.
Yeah, I don't know.
Based on the current situation, the, the, um, uh, and I'm going by, from recollection of my report, I remember looking at some of the, the blogs and they didn't seem to go as deep as the, the basement was going to be go, or the garage was going to be going. So it didn't go down far enough. So I wouldn't be able to make that analysis of that. I, my concern, um, was also the stability of the slope immediately next to the building. When you excavate down, could it destabilize that slope and that, which then could lead to potential impacts for the, the building itself.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, uh, Justin Goldsman, Moran Road. Um, just had a, I'm sorry, Justin Goldsman, Moran Road, um, just had a question in terms of, um, both the application and our general consensus to what we're talking about. We seem to be talking a lot about start to finish from this project, right? We're at point A and by point B, shouldn't they have these concerns? What's stability? Do we have like a phasiology projection to say that in phase one, these are some expectations, you know, versus in phase two, towards the end of the progress, towards the end of the process? Right now there's X amount of trees. Obviously all the trees aren't coming down in one swoop. So as they slowly or exponentially come down, is there a continuous progression of if there's 5,000 trees today, we can expect this much storm runoff water tomorrow, we're moving here, et cetera. Um, in terms of how that might impact the, the residents in the area? And should they then like be notified as the process is ongoing? Or in phase one, these are the expectations that you can assume from drilling from things. This is now phase two. So is there a phasiology or progressive development in the application?
I, I don't know anything about the phasing of the project and, and that sounds like I said, like the, the person asked before, that's kind of a more of a stormwater question for you. For, and that's, that would be the other expert witness.
Okay, would we, um, potentially, or would you, sorry, potentially agree that as this product, project, if it does in fact go through, as the construction and the development goes, we can expect the further along the project goes to see an exacerbated level of environmental concerns?
I, again, I can't answer that. The only, I mean, I can tell you based on experience that the most critical time on these projects is usually mid-construction. Uh, you, you know, everything's stripped bare. It's, it's, you're still trying to stabilize the soils. Uh, so you, you would expect excessive runoff. You, that's why you have to try to get sedimentation basins, um, and things of that nature. So, but it, it will definitely increase stormwater runoff. It's a matter of how it's controlled during the project.
Thank you. Appreciate it. And thank you to the board. Appreciate it very much.
So going back to the whole issue of stabilization, you indicated that there is potential to stabilize the slope. Expensive, yes, but with borings, et cetera, the whole thing's in. I'm just very curious, based on your experience or knowledge, have you run across instances where people were stabilizing a slope where the actual building to be built on it was this close to the edge of the slope? That's kind of question number one. And then two, with anything that we do, we build, there's always a possibility of failure. So again, I'm just curious in again, what you've seen or know of, have there been slope stabilizations of a type that you talked about that have ultimately failed?
Um, no, I have not seen something of that. I have not seen a failure after something had failed. I've seen, uh, anecdotally and over the, in what, in the, on the Watchungs and, uh, I think it was in, uh, North Plainfield, you know? I was once overseeing a project for a geotechnical firm I was working for and the ground seemed, they were filling the side slopes and the, and building a slope and I, I happened to be, um, it looked a little funny, like the, the machine was on Jell-O and I had them, and this was, it was, uh, June of the year. And, um, they started doing a test pit and excavation and they went down about 15 feet and it was snow. Uh, because my firm wasn't there to oversee the initial, uh, project, so I had to take them, take the whole slope down and rebuild it. But I mean, those, those things can happen and there needs to be adequate oversight. Um, and if it's designed, uh, you know, the engineer that designs it needs to have very close attention to the, um, uh, oversight of construction.
So then going back to my first question, and again, you may not have seen this in your experience, but considering how little, uh, distance there is from the edge of that building to the slope, is it your opinion that there is even enough space in order to do an appropriate remediation?
Um, doubtful. I mean, you'd have to go, you'd have to do the work on the slope itself. I mean, that's, that's not necessarily easy. It can be done, uh, you know, that's, that there's contractors out there that can do it. Like I said, uh, my recommendation last time was to move the building back, move it away from the edge of that slope.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Gall. Uh, just have a few questions. I won't be very long. Uh, I just wanted to make clear, uh, in the slope study area, i- is the applicant proposing any disturbance on the actual slope?
No.
Okay, does the applicant propose?
Well, it depends. It's, I'm sorry, it depends if the blasting has an impact on it, but that's, that would be.
I, I just asked if there's going to be any proposed disturbance on the slope.
You mean like, like going in and grading and doing tree clearing and things?
Building a building, any, any kind of disturbance?
Well, they're building right up to the edge of the slope.
What, what is the slope area that you studied in the report?
Uh, well, I, I looked at all four cross sections of that on the nor- the eastern side of the building. So the slopes all along the eastern side of the building.
Let, let me rephrase and I'll refer just so there's a, a frame of reference. I refer to the zoning ordinance. The zoning ordinance for this particular property says that the east face of the Watchung Mountain shall remain undisturbed from the peak of the ridge line, except that utility constructions will be permitted east of the ridge line.
Oh, well, this.
Is the applicant proposing any disturbance to the east of the peak of the ridge line?
Yes. Look at the grading plans. There's a, there's a big knob on, there's two knobs on the, on the building. They're putting the building right on top of them.
So i- it's your testimony that the building D violates the zoning ordinance?
Well, it's, if that, if, I don't know the zoning ordinance on it, but if that's the zoning ordinance, they're in violation. Thank you. Yes.
Okay, so there's actually a lot. Okay, so it's your testimony that building D violates the zoning ordinance? I just want to get that on the line and look at this.
Like I said, I'm not going to state that it violates the zoning ordinance simply because I didn't look at the zoning ordinance. If you want me to take a look at the zoning ordinance, I can do that. Now, well, and I'm.
I'm going to raise an objection because the witness is not a planner. He didn't speak to violations of zone codes. He simply spoke to the geotechnical questions and referred to the effects of blasting that will have impacts. Well, it's outside the scope of direct. I mean, Mr. Plack is trying to score points in a sense with a witness who didn't speak to those issues.
Just to, can I, can I?
You've heard my objection for whatever it's worth. Thank you.
Can I just clarify? The attorney, uh, the attorney, the, the applicant's counsel gave me the definition, explained it to me and based on that interpretation of what he's saying is they built on top of the ridge. Um, the other thing is, and just remember, the last meeting I was at, um, we looked at the concept that was approved for the settlement. The building's east of that now. They moved it 50 feet. So it's not the same as the concept. Thank you.
All right, and the applicant strongly disagrees with that. It's not true and, and we'll clarify that. Talk about trying to score points.
I didn't say, I didn't say anything yet. How could I score points?
It's been such a nightmare.
We're, we're, thank you. Um. I have no question. I have no question. All right. What, what, what is the geological composition of the footprint of the proposed building date? I'm sorry. It's the geology of the ground under the proposed building date in the footprint.
Uh, it is, it's basically a volcanic intrusion. It's, it's, uh, basalt.
Bedrock?
I'm sorry.
Any bedrock?
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's the definition of bedrock.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to make that clear.
Not competent bedrock, but bedrock. Thank you.
Just give me one moment, please. Mr. Gall, it was your testimony that you believe that Langen didn't do enough testing on the slope. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, but you also testified that geotechnical engineering is not an exact science, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so if you claim that not enough testing was done and that geotechnical engineering is not an exact science, then how can you make, form the opinion that the proximity of the homes represents a severe consequence of failure?
Because the location of the proposed building adjacent to a steep slope that has rock quality that's not, uh, a, a high quality rock in, in a lot of locations would give me pause and I would want to do more investigation, um, of that, of the condition of that slope. So I would recommend doing more borings.
How many more borings? How many is enough?
You'll have to ask Langen.
But it's not an exact science, is it?
It's, it's actually engineering.
It's not an exact science. That was your testimony.
No, it's, it, there is, well, the, it's not an exact science simply because as, as the factor of safeties I was describing is that there are so many, uh, uh, different factors that can change between borings. The more borings you have, the better. And if you have a, a, for example, critical infrastructure or a structure adjacent to, uh, let's say, a, a really steep slope that has a potential for failures to hit a house down, downhill, I would do more.
All right, and correct me if I'm wrong, and I may be wrong. So I'm not trying to put any words in your mouth. Did you testify at one point that there was a, a specific point on the property in your analysis that had a point seven nine factor of safety? Did I hear that correctly?
Uh, that was downhill. It was a very, yeah, it was an anomaly in the, the program.
So that, that, but a point seven nine would indicate a failure, correct?
Well, we've gotten actually, we've done slope stability and like I said, um, we've done slope stability analysis where we've had actually factors of safety less than one. It doesn't mean it's going to immediately fail, but it's, there's an incipient potential for it to fail.
Has there been any failure?
Where?
Where, where you analyzed the point seven nine?
No.
Okay, all right. Thank you. I have nothing else. And, and just for the record, uh, our, our geotechnical engineer has reviewed Mr. Gall's testimony from his original hearing. They're going to review this testimony. They've reviewed both reports and we will have no issue addressing any of these points.
And we'll be happy to cross examine that engineer at the appropriate time. Uh, we have no further questions for Mr. Gall.
Thank you.
Thank you very much there. Jeff, do you have anything else to say?
Um, I'm all saying doubt.
Thank you.
Product transparent.
Thank you for our things to do.
Thank you. I have very limited work to do right now, but I need to just proffer some.
I have very limited work to do right now, but I need to just proffer some documents.
What?
Proffer some documents. Uh, also, I'd like to, before Mr. Gall, Gall leaves. The Gall, yeah, yeah. I'm sure, wait, one second. We do need to move his report into evidence in case he's needed. I just wanted to, uh, move his report as the next.
For identification. There's really no evidence.
I, I didn't know whether it's marked. Okay, it's marked.
Oh, it's, uh, oh, twenty-one, I think. Yeah.
Great, thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, la, at the last meeting, Mr. Penulo wanted to make reference to and introduce certain documents. The chair said he felt that would not be relevant, uh, to be a part of the record for various reasons discussed at that time. I have been asked by my client to identify those documents for the record that Mr. Penulo was proffering. So we have a reference point as to what he was, uh, proposing.
These are the documents, these are the documents that predate, as I recall, this application?
No, they don't predate the filing of the application. They predate the hearing.
Hearing.
Correct. They predate the hearing and they concern certain legal issues that were raised by Mr. Potter, who was counsel before I came into this case. I did not have anything to do with these documents.
Request you send them to Ms. McGovern to evaluate them and we'll have a decision at the next meeting. Uh, are they something that needs to be between now and the next meeting?
Does not need to be done right now. It just needs to be done at some point so we identify what documents we were referring.
Well, we'll have Ms. McGovern look at it. She'll send a copy to Mr. Placker.
Mr. Placker has a copy.
Mr. Placker has a copy, so Mr. Placker will respond to Ms. McGovern after she reviews the documents and will come up with a solution. Uh, at the end, that'll be, and it'll be posted at the next meeting.
Yeah, I understand you've ruled that that, they're not part of the record, but I want to identify what we were proffering, so the record changes.
I understand. I, I just want to make sure we do it with the correct facts.
Absolutely. We don't need to do it tonight.
Okay, thank you. Hey, the next regular planning board meeting will be Wednesday, September third, twenty twenty-five, seven thirty P M, on Zoom. And the next special meeting of the planning board will be held August twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, at six fifty P M, in person here with counsel.
For this application for West Essex.
Island's application.
No further notice.
No further notice will be required. Good motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second. Close the eyes above the nose.